Good morning. This is a regular meeting of the Cameron County Commissioners Court. It is the 27th day of March, 2014. It's about 8:50 in the morning as we do all meetings. We will start with a brief moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the U.S. flag and the Texas flag. And I'd like to ask, we have a lot of members of our law enforcement here, JPs and some constables in the back row. And I keep telling them this is not church, but it sounds like it sometimes. So I'd like to have them lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance when that time comes. Okay, now you can lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
... United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honored Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible. Thank you. For those of y'all that heard that, that was a dress rehearsal. Public comment. I have one. Nancy Yantis or Yant- Yant? And just introduce yourself for the record and thank you, ma'am.
My name is Nancy Yantis, 14 Atlantic Street, Pottsboro, Texas, 75076. Good morning. It is my understanding that you may be voting in executive session on an item that concerns myself and my husband. My husband, Robert Yantis, and I have been coming to Isla Blanca Park on South Padre Island since 2002. That's 13 years. We love it there, and yes, we are winter Texans. We are always excited to arrive, but this year, this season, when we arrived on December 14th, we were even more excited because we had a brand-new fifth wheel. We were scheduled to leave on Friday, March 14th. On Thursday, February 27th, an accident occurred. A rock or piece of broken concrete from a lawnmower driven by park employee Jose Torres shattered our large window in the rear of our fifth wheel, our new fifth wheel. Park Ranger Israel Tapia Jr. completed a police report, and we were told to wait. About eight hours later, the glass fell out. That was about 7:30 in the evening. A friend of ours had a piece of heavy plastic that he and my husband tried to affix with duct tape to cover the hole. It didn't hold very well, and about 5:00 a.m. after a sleepless night, we were back outside trying to figure out what to do next. A trip to Walmart was made, and gorilla tape was tried to reattach the plastic. Later on that same day, the park workers put a blue tarp over our plastic. I'm not very good at waiting. So on Friday, I began to make multiple phone calls to multiple places. Estimates were received, and on Monday, March 3rd, a Keystone dealer in Donna, Texas placed an order for the replacement window unit. We could not risk structural damage by driving 650 miles to get home without a rear window. It's surprising how long it takes to receive a replacement window. But it was finally shipped on March 20th and received at Isla Blanca Park yesterday, March 26th. Window is scheduled to be installed today, and my husband and I plan to leave for home tomorrow. We did not extend our stay by choice. Since February 28th, our new fifth wheel has had a blue tarp, duct tape, lots of duct tape, covering a gaping hole. It's dark, it's depressing, it's often cold, and a constant reminder that we have a broken window and can't leave. Every day, we hope and pray the tarp is still in place. I hope you believe me when I say no one is more anxious than we are to be able to leave for home. At this time, there are many vacant lots at Isla Blanca Park. We have offered to pay for the electricity that we used during our extended stay. We have already been told the replacement window and the installation charges are not our responsibility. It was an unfortunate accident. We are not asking for punitive damages, but we are respectfully requesting that the lot rent be waived after our scheduled date to leave of March 14th. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Just for the record, we will not be voting on it in executive session. It will be discussed, and the vote will take place in open session after we come out. Okay? Thank you.
I've got one.
Yes, sir.
Apologize for my tardiness this morning. I've got a three-year-old who recently started school, and every morning, he cries when I drop him off at school. So I have to sit there for about 15 minutes with him till he gets busy. So I apologize for my tardiness, and that's why I'm late.
Wait till tomorrow morning. And the reason I make that comment, there's an item on the agenda that requires four affirmative votes, and as you can see, there's only three of us. And the only time we can recess this meeting for tomorrow, but the only time I can get four people here is at 7:30 in the morning. So...
I guess I'm bringing him with me to school tomorrow morning.
I guess you bring him with him. He can sit right here. And I'll honor his vote. Anyway, just so you know, tomorrow morning, looks like we're gonna be meeting at 7:30 in the morning. Not by choice, but by circumstance. Okay. Consent. Any item under consent any member of the court wish to take out and discuss separately? On item X, it's... Who gave me that one? On item X is approval subject to...
I spoke to Legal about it, Judge, and I think we need to table it because we need to wait for the signatures from David Baptiste.
Okay. So item X will be tabled.
Quadruple N.
To pull out?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else? Hearing none and sensing none. Do I hear a motion to approve consent items with the exception of the item X to be tabled and triple N to discuss separately? Move by Commissioner...
Quadruple N.
Quadruple X, pardon.
Hold on, Judge, just a second. You're gonna pull 2A. That is the one requiring...
That's what we're gonna have to do tomorrow. Okay. That one will not be discussed at this time.
We'll pull it from the approval list.
Correct.
Yeah, we'll pull it, and then tomorrow, after the recess of this meeting today at 7:30, we'll take it up.
Okay. Anything else, Dave?
Item 2V, like Victor. We just need a correction on the agenda item. It should read Madison instead of Monroe.
Okay.
The RFQ read correctly, and so did the ad in the paper going out this week, so...
Got it. Anything else? Okay. Do I hear a motion and a second?
Some.
Moved by Commissioner Benavides.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sanchez to approve the consent items with the exception of the items that were recessing until tomorrow, tabled, and with the correction. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Action items. Budget amendments, line item transfers under salary schedules.
What about quadruple N?
What's quadruple N? Oh, I'm sorry. Go on, take that out. Quadruple N. County Clerk Joe G. De Vette and office staff to collection supervisor Reto Bariones and records management supervisor Lucina Rosenbahn to travel to Laredo, Texas.
Wrong one, Judge. Quadruple, quadruple four N.
Oh, I'm sorry. Man, I didn't know we went that far. Quadruple N. Oh, so that one was okay. Then let me hear a motion to approve triple N, then, by Commissioner Benavides.
We didn't pull that one.
Yeah, we did. That's the one that I circled out.
That's the one I had pulled.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I understood.
Triple N, right? Okay.
I'm sorry.
So I just wasn't hearing things. Okay.
I'll speak up. Move to approve triple N.
Moved by Commissioner Sanchez. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Commissioner Benavides. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Quadruple N?
Quadruple N.
N is in Nancy.
It's the consideration acknowledgement of the status of the SH550 direct connector project.
Pete?
Judge, Commissioners, you have attached a PowerPoint with the status of the project. As of the end of February, the project was approximately 60% complete. We're still working on a schedule that will have completion of the project September 22nd, 2014. We recently placed the beams over US 77I-69 East. We've got about 25 beams to go. Those will probably be set sometime during the summer, hopefully after school is out so that we don't have to deal with the bus routes. There's a series of pictures on the placement of the beams that was going on. The majority of the beams that were placed over the frontage roads were done during the graveyard shift so that we wouldn't interrupt traffic locally that goes into the area right there off of FM 803. We... The total cost of the project is $44 million to date. We've paid out about 26% of the... I mean, $26 million, which is about 59% of the total contract price. During the course of the project, since we started a year ago, we've hired 53 full-time employees, and about 52 of those have been local employees. The contract payments that have been made, 86% of the payments have been made to local contractors, and so we're awfully proud of that because, you know, we've hired locally and both for the employees that are on the job, but also for the contractors and subcontractors that have been out there since the start of the project. The very last slide just shows you an aerial of where we're at with the project. And so we're very anxious to complete the project. It is on schedule to be completed at the end of September. This, actually, as we speak, the Texas Transportation Commission, on their agenda today is an item for the overweight corridor from the Free Trade Bridge to the Port of Brownsville, and the route will be exactly on SH550. So the completion of this project is important for that route because that will give commercial vehicles that have an overweight cargo the ability to get from the Free Trade Bridge to the Port of Brownsville in a very timely manner. So we will update the court on a monthly basis on the status of the project that as of today, we're on schedule to complete it towards the end of September and have it operational in October.
Thanks, Pete. I just wanted that for the public's benefit.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
So move.
By Commissioner Sanchez, second by. Commissioner Benavides, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries. Budget amendments, line item transfers, under salary schedules.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. You have the budget amendments that were placed in front of you, and the first one is a budget amendment for the Border Prosecution Unit, and then setting up the budget for crime victims, donations, a budget for that. Constable Precinct One, the usage of forfeiture funds. The next are all line item transfers, emergency management, bail bonds, JP 5-3, Auditor's Office, Jail Division, Sheriff's Office, Historical Committee, Juvenile Boot Camp, Juvenile Detention, Juvenile Probation, Public Works, Engineering, the HIDA, HIDA Grants, and then you have the Health Grants, Diverge Court, the Sheriff's, Department of Treasury Forfeitures, and the District Courts. You also have a budget amendment from the Health Department for the WIC, and this sets up the budget for the remainder of their fiscal year operations. There are salary schedules for the MOU with the FBI through the DA's office. Then you have salary schedules for the Juvenile Department and for the DA's office as well, for your approval.
Any questions?
Move to approve.
Moved by Commissioner Benavides.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sanchez to approve as presented. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries. Claims?
Claims, warrants number 317706 through 318421, and number 318423 through 318553. Payroll for $1,728,172.74. Additional payroll for $894.41. ACH healthcare claims for $391,118.23. There is a... Two warrants that are being presented. They are payments to Municipal Services Bureau for toll violations on the State Highway 550 toll road. Those are county vehicles that are not classified as emergency vehicles that are exempt from paying a toll. So Cameron County is being assessed violations for those drivers that are driving county vehicles without the authorization, without paying the toll. I know it has been addressed very briefly, but those checks are warrants number 318080 and 318348. One of them is for $351.73. The other one is for $1.67. I don't know if the court wants... What action they want us to take on that, if we pay the toll since they are in the name of Cameron County and set up receivables for these individuals. I know that Civil has not been contacted regarding if it is a deduction that we can withhold from the employee's pay or if...
Is it the same employee, Martha, or is it...
We have citations that are for the Bridge Division, for the jail, for the Sheriff's Office, for the parks, Roden Bridge. So it's...
So the 300 amount is for several?
It's several departments, yes.
Okay. Well, can we hold off on paying that for now and maybe get with the departments and then talk to the collector of this money and try to resolve it without having to pay that?
Well, I think the exemption is only for first responder, emergency vehicles. These are not.
Yeah, I think we can table, and I can get with Martha, because we also have an interlocal between the county and the RMA on maintenance of it, and I think that's with Public Works. So there might be some vehicles from Roden Bridge. It might be associated with that maintenance, and we can work that out. So if you all want to table it, I can get with Martha.
There's no urgency to pay it now? I mean, there's...
No.
As far as like penalties or whatever?
Yeah, we'll take care of that.
Pete, have all the employees been alert that drive county vehicles? Have they been told that they're not supposed to be on there?
Yeah, going back probably... I think we've done it multiple times, going back to at least two and a half years ago when we first opened the gantry.
Okay. Thank you. Also, contract checks were just read in, and if the court would like to release those through a regular... As a regular claim for today, and that way, the people that are out of town will get their checks tomorrow since Monday is a holiday. I also have voids that I'd like to read in. They are warrant number 317489, 312695, 299616, and 298070. And those two claims that were read in that are payable to MSP, those checks will be voided.
Okay. I move... Do you recommend approval?
Yes.
I move to approve, but please note my abstention on warrants 318325, 318399, and 424808.
Okay, let me hear them. That's a motion from Commissioner Benavides to approve the claims as presented, also tabling the, for now, the items related to the tolls and abstention on your items. Please note my abstention on the affidavits I've provided. Anything?
I'll second it, and the only... On the voids, what are they for, Martha? The voids? The voids? What are they for?
There was three warrants, I mean, four warrants that were read in as voided. Three are for still dated checks that are reissued, and one was a vendor submitted two separate invoices with two separate invoice numbers, and so consequently, it was double paid. So one check has been returned.
Oh, okay.
Second by Commissioner Sanchez. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries. I've been asked to table the minutes. Do I hear a motion to table?
So move.
By Commissioner Benavides. Second by Commissioner Sanchez. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item D, consideration approval of proposal from Latos to relocate the existing Vacas unit at the B&amp;M Bridge of the West Rail National Bridge as a sole source.
Judge, Commissioners, real quick, an update on the status of the West Rail project. On the U.S. side, actually, both on the U.S. and Mexican side, it's substantially complete. There is a punch list that we're working with Union Pacific as they do their final inspections on the track and on the International Bridge. Mexico is doing the same thing with their rail operator, Kansas City Southern Mexico. After this punch list is finalized, then we'll go back to the contractor so that they can address the items in the punch list. So I think we're at the tail end of the project. The one item that's been pending for, you know, probably a couple of years now, has been the relocation of the Vacas unit from the existing B&amp;M Bridge.
Explain what the Vacas unit is.
The Vacas unit is the X-ray machine that is utilized by Customs and Border Protection to scan the rail cars as they come into the United States. There is one unit on the U.S. side and one unit on the Mexican side. So in essence, there's two units. In this case, it's the same vendor that provided the U.S. unit and the Mexican unit. There's been a lot of discussion on whose responsibility it is. This piece of equipment will be used by Customs and Border Protection. It will never be used by the project sponsor or Union Pacific. Nonetheless, the responsibility falls on the local project sponsor to fund the relocation of the existing unit. And we went through different scenarios trying to determine whether the existing unit should be relocated or if we should provide a brand-new unit, state-of-the-art, that would hopefully facilitate and expedite the processing of the cars as they come into the United States. After multiple meetings, you know, including meetings with the Commissioner of CBP in Washington, we've come to the agreement that we will relocate the existing unit. We had gotten multiple proposals from the vendor. The latest proposal is a reasonable proposal at a cost similar to what we had been quoted, you know, four or five years ago. We've had discussions on the funding of it. We have a letter from the administrator of Federal Highway Administration that SDP funds from the Brownsville MPO, federal funds are eligible for this cost. So that is the route that we're gonna take on the funding of it. Not sure the process that it will take the MPO to allocate the money, but in the meantime, the RMA can upfront the money so that we can proceed and given the vendor, the contractor, a notice to proceed so that they can start the relocation process. From start to finish, when it's operational, it's 12 weeks. So that 12 weeks hopefully will be in line with the items in the punch list that needs to be addressed by the contractor so that by early midsummer, the bridge can be operational. There's also agreements in place between the United States Customs and Border Protection and Mexican Customs that once there's one unit on the new West Rail Bridge, one new Vacas unit operational, they will open the bridge and they will be... They will share images whether that unit is in Mexico or the United States. At this point, my belief is that we will be in a position to be able to start the relocation process before Mexico. Mexico is still going through their Congress in allocating the funding for their relocation. They do not have the infrastructure. We have the majority of the infrastructure in place to where the vendor can just come in and set the unit. So, you know, hopefully, hopefully that's the case, and we can start operation of the bridge midsummer with the unit on the U.S. side. There... Originally, we had planned on maybe doing a joint ceremony for the West Rail Project and the Veterans Bridge Project, but Veterans Bridge Project will be completed on the Mexican side April 5th. So the Mexican delegation is proposing a May 5th ceremony for the Veterans Bridge, and we more than likely will not have high-ranking officials from the U.S. and Mexico. But for the West Rail, there has been a lot of attention at the White House level, and so we do expect high-ranking officials for that ceremony in midsummer. So my recommendation to the court, there's a memo somewhere in your packet, is to approve the proposal subject to the funding from the Brownsville MPO and the RMA funding the interim if we needed to fund the project as the MPO goes through that process, and the terms and conditions subject to legal review and approval.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to that effect?
So move.
Moved by Commissioner Benavides. I have a second.
Second.
By Commissioner Sanchez, discussion.
You're saying, "subject to legal approval"?
Correct.
Okay. And Legal, I just ask you to look at the special notes and instructions. It's talking about FOB origin, and it specifically says Vista, California, but we're moving them from Brownsville to Brownsville. And let's make sure that the warranties on if it gets damaged in transit or in setup, either way, we're covered, please.
We'll look at that, and there might be permits that the EPA requires, and those will be the responsibility of the vendor as well.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
I just wanted to thank Pete. It's been a rough road trying to get to this point, and I know that finally the county, the federal government, and the city of Brownsville, the RMA, were able to finally finalize this most important project, historical project also. So thank you, Pete.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thanks, Pete.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Thank you. Item E, consideration possible approval of the Committee Loan Center Memorandum of Understanding, allowing for county employees to obtain small-dollar loans and possible authority for a payroll deduction to repay the loans. If y'all recall, there was a presentation made about a month ago with this group. I think there's representatives from this group. I don't think it's a bad idea. I just, if we can get the auditor to, you know, to agree to it, not that she needs to. There's always been issues regarding the payroll deduction in terms of room on the check, et cetera, and I think... Are you okay with that if we decide to move forward? Another question from Legal, too. They were gonna look into the legal aspect of it, if we can do that. And so maybe we might... First, can you do it logistically on the check, and then, secondly, can we do it legally from your side?
There is...
Well, never mind, Martha.
If you decide that you want to do this, I think the only way that you can do it is if we change our personnel policy and procedures manual to include this as an employee benefit. I've read the statute. In the loan connection, there is provision there for payroll deductions and whatnot payable to a credit union. This outfit, to my knowledge, is not a credit union. But like other benefits of employment, if you feel like there is enough public policy justification for having this program whereby our employees might benefit from relatively low-interest loans on a small-time basis as opposed to the treatment out in the market, and if you wish, you know, to collect an administrative fee or not, in order for you to do that, if there is an administrative fee, and, you know, my understanding from talking to Martha in the past is that it takes time and effort every time one of these deductible expenses is taken out of pay because there has to be record made of it, and you have to have the employee's authority to do it, and then there's... Later, there has to be a certain... If they decide to change their mind, or when the loan is paid off, then the paperwork has to be changed yet again. So while it is problematic, I believe legally it could be justified as an employee benefit. Otherwise, the statute does not expressly authorize that. So if you wish to go there, that would be my recommendation to do it. And there's also, yes, Doby reminds me that there is a memorandum of understanding that goes along with this that the vendor is wanting us to sign off on, and we see no reason... goes along with this, that the vendor is wanting us to sign off on, and we see no reason whatsoever to sign on to that agreement. If the court wishes to do this, as an incident employment, an employee benefit, make it available to all people who work for the county, that's one thing, and that will be up to the individual employee to make arrangements with the auditor if that's what you want to do, to get this done. But there's no reason for the county otherwise to be involved in it, other than to simply authorize it. And then I would recommend that first, we fix our Personnel Policy Procedure Manual so we have some fundamental basis for doing it before you actually authorize this.
I believe, I mean, I see where the statute allows this court to decide that this would serve a public benefit for the employees and where it could conceivably be a payroll deduction. I question what the court's intent would be here, other than to maybe provide feasibly low-term financing for some of the employees. However, this is not a credit union, as stated. This is a group of banks that have formed this corporation or association. And by facilitating this for a particular group, what is the court opening itself up to when we have other commercial vendors that have relatively similar packages that want to give that same benefit to county employees? I know that when this vendor came in, or when this company came in and made the presentation, it was stated that they would, when it gets approved, that they would transact the funds to the employee through a direct deposit or through an ACH transfer of some type, an EFT transfer. So I don't understand why the payment could not be withdrawn from the employee in the same fashion. As this court is aware, there have been other vendors that have come before the court that could conceivably also have been a public purpose. We had one vendor in particular that wanted to come in and financing for home appliances, for things of that sort. It was determined that, thankfully, that that was not a public purpose. So I'm not sure what the court is opening itself up to by facilitating this type of a venture, or what actually the benefit is. And I don't really, I don't really feel that it is an allowable payroll deduction.
Martha, what other companies do we do payroll deductions for?
We do payroll deductions for insurances that are, have a health benefit for the employees. We do IRS levies, student loan levies, deposits to credit unions. And on the deposits to the credit unions, there are not payments per se for, that we are aware of, rather. These employees have accounts set up at the credit unions, and it's a transfer, it's an EFT that goes out to that particular credit union. And these funds get deposited in the employee's account that they have at the credit union, and then the credit union will distribute whatever they need to distribute, where it's supposed to go. We're not doing actual payments on loans that we're aware of.
What distinguishes this from the insurance?
An insurance benefit is something that provides for the health of an employee.
But we already provide for health insurance for employees, right?
These are, well, the other insurances are your dental, cancer, stroke, things of that sort. And the court has provided these benefits, you know, they facilitated these benefits for the employees at their cost.
Right.
The other thing, Commissioner, is the statute expressly talks about life insurance. It expressly authorizes it. If we go there, and, you know, to try to be as clear as I can about a kind of a gray area here, I'm inclined to agree that the safer position, legally, I think, would be not to do this. But I can see a way where, in the exercise of the discretion as administrative and executive body of Cameron County, if you were to find that it is important as a means of getting and keeping quality employees, that it could be justified, because there is, after all, the provision in the statute that talks about anything else that the Commissioner's Court feels that is in, you know, the best interest of the county and whatnot. The administrative side of it, I don't know what the cost of doing it would be, but, like I say, I think the better position is that, you know, ideally, if people would have a credit union account, if they have a loan that they want to get automatic pay, then, you know, they go to a credit union, which is about the only thing in the statute that talks about automatic payments on credit arrangements. Otherwise, the statute specifically says that, for insurances that she's discussed, these are authorized. There is an argument that had the legislature intended to make small payday loan arrangements part of one of the things that they would themselves expressly authorize, they would have said so. So if we go there, the legal justification, if any, will have to come from the discretionary judgment of this court in view of the statute's general reference to other deductions, you know, that the court finds are of public purpose.
Let me say this. First of all, legal said that, I think what I inferred was prefer not to do it, but if we wanted to do it, it'd be a policy decision. I think it could very well be a benefit, but the way you would look at it is this, we have a lot of employees that unfortunately do live paycheck to paycheck, and they may require that need for financial assistance to fill a gap. The reason that the statute addresses credit unions, because at the time that statute was written, there was nothing like this available. It was either credit union, or people would go to, you know, I'm not going to say, you know, these small loan companies that you've got that are charging a much higher rate, even though I think this interest rate is a little high, at 18%, but nonetheless, it's, these other agencies are charging far greater than 18%, some as high as 24%. So I think the benefit you have to look at, I think, is, okay, how does it help the employee? As we know that the credit rating of people in Cameron County is extremely high, the benefit I would see was help an employee fill that gap and not have to go someplace else to borrow at 24% or higher. And to me, that would be a benefit to the employee. And you can define benefit any way you want, but this would be, to them, I believe, a benefit to them. And I don't have an issue doing it. I'd like to address the administrative fee for a little bit, because I know we've talked about that in the past. I don't have a problem addressing it in the Personnel Policy Manual if we need to change it. There's some reps here that are willing to answer any question from the court or the general public on these particular issues. If we're told that legally we cannot do it, then it's a moot point, then we move on. But if there's a gray area, then I think it's, I don't have any issue with pursuing it, and maybe even seeking out an opinion at the state level for it, if it's that defining, which I don't believe it is. So having said that, you know, I welcome any member that, I know I've talked to a few that have worked on this for a number of years, and other government, well, come on up, and somebody whomever is going to address this, and then just introduce yourself to the court, please.
Good morning. I'm Nadia Adolso, I'm the Program Manager for the Community Loan Center. Did you have...
Good morning. Well, if anybody has any questions about it, I guess the question, you heard some of the concerns that were expressed, is there any way that you can address some of those concerns?
If the issue about having it payroll deduction, the legality of it, it is legal. We need to be able to offer the employee the option of doing it either payroll deduction or EFT. If they choose payroll deduction, we do payroll deduction through the employer.
Can you explain, just, I don't think I did a very good job of explaining what I thought to be the benefit. Can you explain what you believe to be the benefit of doing this?
Absolutely.
For employees?
Well, see, with us, our interest rate isn't as high. Some of the payday loans out there, their interest rate is up to 300% on the cash advances, title loans. Our product, definitely having it payroll deduction, it gives the consumer peace of mind that it's coming out straight from their payroll. They don't see it, they don't feel it, and it's a much lower interest rate. They work a lot better, they have less stress in their job.
What is the interest rate?
It's 18%. We don't foresee it going up anytime soon at all.
Is the 18 regardless of whether it's an EFT or a payroll deduction?
Yes.
So they can still get an 18% rate, even if we don't do payroll deduction?
That's right.
So payroll deduction isn't controlling or helping them get the loan?
Absolutely not. Well, it must be payroll deduction so that we can give them the loan, but the 18% stays.
That's not what you just said.
The 18% goes across the board. In order for them to apply for a loan, they have to be working through a participating employer.
So they can't do an EFT from their bank?
No, unless they leave their job, and they're no longer working with the county or whomever the participating employer is, then we do bank.
You could speak into the mic a little bit, because I'm having a hard time.
Okay. Explain how some companies charge 300%.
It's called, it's not an interest rate fee. It's a, I'm sorry?
Can't hear you.
Wendy, I think you're going to have to come up and, thank you. Good morning.
Morning.
And just introduce yourself for the record, thank you.
I'm Wendy Hansen, I'm with United Way, I'm the Community Impact Director there, and I've spent about six years working on this product to provide it to the community. It's a service to our community. There are thousands of loans being generated here in our community that are costing our families incredible amounts of money. What we know through the research this past year has been that many of our families are getting repeated loans from some of our predatory lenders, and I'll call them predatory lenders, they are small-dollar loan lenders, lending at a level that does not allow our families to get out of the service. So they are repeated loans, they're paying upwards of 500% on each one of the loans, plus fees every time they're renewed. They take them out, they're supposed to be repaid on a monthly basis, or whenever they get their next paycheck. Oftentimes, the amount of money that they're lending is so much more than the family can pay back. So what we've created through the CDFI, which is a community development financial institution, which did not exist in the days when you probably wrote your personnel policies, back then, a lot of this business was done through credit unions. But the CDFIs have been established across the US to do just what we're doing, to pull together, pool money together, to be able to address all kinds of issues. In the past, our CDFI, Rio Grande Valley Multibank, has addressed the need for affordable housing here, and they've done that for over 20 years. About five years ago, we started looking at, well, what is stripping wealth away from our families? Why aren't our families able to get ahead? Why do they have such terrible credit scores? And we began to understand what was happening, that we had an incredible growth of payday lending industries popping up all over town. Within six years, we like tripled the number of payday lenders that were operating here. They operate here because we have so many folks that have such low incomes. They provide a need. Our families need cash, and they need it quickly, which the model works for. So when we created this, what we were trying to do was to put an alternative product out on the market that would actually be able to lift families up. Once they come into the product, from there, we're also able to offer them financial education, credit counseling, and help them get back on track, but also give them a loan that they have a whole year to pay back. These loans are 300 to $1,000, yes, the interest rate is at 18%, but it's an affordable, it is an affordable product for families who just need a quick fix. Oftentimes, what we're finding is this is a car repair, it's a quick medical bill, and these things, if they went to the lenders that are available, would take them a lot longer to pay back, and it would cost them a whole lot more money. So it is a benefit to your employees, and it is something that we've spent years developing, and we are about to take the product statewide, and you would be the first municipality to approve the product.
Or the first county?
The first county.
Okay. Do you have anything in a municipality, a city?
Yes. Los Fresnos is on board with us. We're providing the service to them. We also are working with La Fedia School District. So we've got, we're working with Anfels out at the port. So we've got quite a few. We have over 36 companies on board with us right now, here, just in our local area.
Okay. Can you answer my question now?
Your question is?
300%. Explain that.
So a lot of our, a lot of the companies that are charging the 300% operate under what they call the community service loophole. So they have avoided all of the state and federal regulations for the caps on lending because they do not consider themselves a bank or a credit union. So they've been able to operate outside of those parameters. What's interesting is that the federal entities have put a cap on the amount a loan can go for military families. So all around military bases, these community service organizations have been able to put caps on them. And we've gone to the state legislature several years in a row, asking to put a cap on our state lending at 36% cap it out, but at this time, they're still operating through loopholes that allow them to charge that.
So their contract say 300% interest?
Yes, they do. Or more, depending on which one you sign up for. Now, what we've asked for here in our city is that it's stated, in all of the lending places here locally, that they clearly state their interest rate. But they also do it through the fees. So if you do not pay your loan back within a certain period of time, then you're assessed fees for that rollover, and sometimes they're automatic rollovers.
And you don't charge those fees in your bank?
No, they have a whole year to pay these back, and there's an initial administrative fee of $25 when they first set it up, and they have the whole year to pay the loan back.
Do you have copies of the documentation that shows the 300% interest?
I can show you some of the ones that I've collected through the years from the folks that we've been serving that have taken out these loans, yes.
And it says 300%?
Sometimes it's a lot more than that. 300 is the bottom. I'll be happy to share those with you.
Okay. Well, I'd move to table this item so they can bring us some of that documentation.
Okay. Do I have a second to table? Okay, let me keep talking. I don't know, I'd like, I'd be interested to see, too, because years ago, I used to audit small loan companies, and their documentation would normally say 24%. 24, I think that's what you're referring to. And I don't know if this is the same, maybe it's apples and oranges, but I think if you lent, if your entity lent somebody $1,000, the most, the most it's going to be in interest should be $180. That's the most. And it could be less, depending on how you're amortizing that note. If you're amortizing it on a rule of seven, if you're amortizing it straight line, it's different. But the most they're going to pay is $180 in interest. That's the most they're going to pay on a $1,000 note. They don't borrow anything else, they just amortize it over 12 months. That's the most they're going to pay.
The most our clients will pay is $120 for $1,000 at one year.
Okay, that means because it's amortizing down, and so you're on a declining basis. Okay. So what I'm hearing, and I see the Commissioner's point, that I have never seen any document that would say you will be charged 300%. that, that would say you will be charged 300, 300% on a $1,000 loan, for instance.
They call it an acquisition fee, and it's an enormous amount.
Well, on the thousand, that means that they borrow 1,000 to pay back, what, 3,000? On the 300% loan? That doesn't make any sense to me. But that's neither here nor there, I think it's important to get that documentation over to see, uh, but...
I can also provide you with the state data for our county on what's going on with payday lending. I can show you how many car title loans have been given out, how many cars have been repossessed, and I can also give you all of the data for the last, for 2012 on the loans and the amount of money and which ones are rolling over.
Well, I, I'm aware, like, the city of San Antonio has outlawed payday loans, so what those companies do is they go outside of the incorporated area, they're still within Barre County, operating. So I don't know if Brownsville's done that, or Harlan General's, Fresnos, or whatever, but to me, 300% interest seems outlandish, and I'd like to see it in writing, if, if that's the statements that you're bringing us, that they're charging 300% interest.
Yeah, I can show you a bunch of different cases that we've looked at, and show you what they pay.
Well, you know, and I, and I understand that, but e- even if it's 24% or higher, this would still be a, a lot less expensive for an employee or anybody, you know, to borrow up to, is it 1,000 or 1,500?
A thousand.
Is it 1,000? But also, you want to mention, this is a rolling thousand, if someone drops it down to 500, they go back out and borrow another 500, correct?
Only once, right?
Per year.
That's what Nick said last time.
Once, yeah.
That you can only go back once to renew it.
That's right.
Within the year.
Within, within the year, okay.
Judge, and, and let me say something. I met a family very recently, and they, in conversations, I found that they owed so many of these payday loan places, and since we're in IRS season, one of the young ladies, member of this family, had with her and showed me where she owed this loan company, and they offered to do her IRS return.
Take the money.
Oh my God, you should see what they charge them. Besides the fee for doing it for them, they charge them for the wire transfer, for the use of the software that they use, I think she paid like $140 just in fees for allowing them to do their income tax return, okay? And that's, I just, I was stunned.
And they get away with it.
That they do this. And I told her, I said, why would you do that, I mean, at a loan company? They don't know any better. There are some of our citizens that don't know any better, and, you know, hey, it comes to income tax time, they look forward to getting some money back, and they have no idea, these people are robbing them blind.
Tracy?
Honorable Judge and Commissioners, I'm Tracy Wicket, I'm the CEO of United Way of Southern Cameron County. A representative of the Community Development Financial Institution has run to her car to get the documentation that you're requesting, but in the meantime, I'm on the Texas Fair Lending Alliance website, and Commissioner Sanchez, just to help you understand, I know that you're thinking about usury protections that are in the Texas constitutions, so you're wondering how APRs 500% or above could possibly be legal. It's because payday and auto title businesses have found a way around the constitutional protections by exploiting a loophole. They're known as credit access businesses under the Credit Services Organizations Act, and so it's a brokered loan between the borrower and a third party. The third party charges the interest below the usury limit to avoid being in conflict with Texas law, but the consumer access business fees are completely unregulated and result in APRs in excess of 500%. So I would hope that you would give us a few moments for the real documentation to present, but in the meantime, if you'd like to read documentation on my iPad, I have it up and ready to go for you.
No, it's okay, it's just the statement she made is they're charging 300%. They're not charging 300%, they're charging within the usurious percentage, but then they're adding on fees, which ends up being a 300%.
There's, there's wonderful data here if you would like to, to check it out.
What was that website again?
TexasFairLending.org.
I think that the, I, I think we're kinda confusing a couple of things. One is the interest rate that they're charging, and then it's the, the effective rate of, of the money use, and, and I think they're two different things. The interest rate is not 300%, but by the time you factor in all these additional fees, the, the, the effective amount of your, of paying back that loan could be as high as 300% or more if you compare the dollars to dollars, but the interest rate, I don't think you're gonna find anywhere that'll say APR 300%. You might find APR 24 plus all applicable fees, and when you, when you factor in those fees, it could very well add up to the, you know, whatever percentage you're talking about, that's what I think.
And, and that was my point, I don't think you're gonna find 300%. And where I'm going with that is, so the way you get to 300% effectively is by all these other fees. My next follow-up question would be, your institution doesn't charge those fees, correct?
That's correct.
So there, there won't be any of those types of fees that will be associated with this type of loan?
Absolutely not, they will only see an administration fee of $20 and the interest rate. At $1,000, 12 months, the total fees is $120.
Let me ask you something, of the $20 fee, you all charging are, are an admin fee, why can't you pass that admin fee on to us? Since the, the entity, this consortium is, is, you know, 18% when they're borrowing at three and a half from the Fed or something, is a, is a pretty good spread, or less, you know, it's a good, but I know the risk, and that's what they're doing, but I think one of, one of the concerns is that every time we add one of these payroll deductions to it, and we, we don't charge admin fees to a lot of people, we've started to look at that, and I think that's the auditor's concern too, is that, you know, we're gonna, she's gonna have to allocate some staff and time and resources in order to do this every, every pay period. So I don't know if you'd wanna consider, you know, that, part of that $20 fee being paid over to Cameron County to reimburse some of those costs that, that she's incurring.
The $20 admin fee covers our operating costs, and it doesn't cover all of our operating costs, we're not making money.
Well, someone's making money at 18%.
Well, the people that are lending the, the money, I mean, you, you have brokers, you send it out, right? I mean, you don't have the money yourself, you're not lending it.
It's the banks.
Right, the consortium of banks. And, well, and the other thing though, Judge, is I wouldn't feel comfortable charging a fee for this when we don't charge a fee for all the other deductions.
That's right, that's why I said that we have other things that...
We need to treat them all the same.
Yeah, that's what we're doing.
So that's not totally correct, the fee goes to cover the cost of our admin fees. We've been able to cover this and create this through a grant from the US Treasury Department that was specifically given to us to create the capital to make this happen. The, the pool of money that this operates from is a closed pool of money from a grant, and we've created a business plan to be able to grow this, to be able to turn it back around and lend it back out to the community.
So, so to summarize, by approving this, it would help our county employees get a lower rate than the 24 that's being charged out there, 6% lower. It would not, there would not be any fees that could end up creating a 300% because you only have the, the one fee plus the interest, correct?
Yes.
So...
And the money in this pool that's made from this pool is reinvested back into that same loan pool.
Okay. So I, I do see how there's a benefit to our county employees, and I would move to approve.
Second.
Subject to changing our policies and procedures.
Yeah, let me, let me just ask this, since it looks like we're going to go here, if, if, if it's all right with the Commission, Commissioner's Court, I'd like to request copies of the contracts that you use so that we can, you know, do an independent review of what those contracts contain in terms of fees.
All, all this is gonna be subject to legal anyway, so...
Right.
Whatever you got, so we're gonna, there's a motion, a second, to approve it, subject to legal reviewing it, make sure everybody's got their Ts crossed and Is dotted, but let me go back to the auditor, because it has been mentioned in the past about the extra work that, that, that she does with that, and I'm not suggesting, albeit to charge a fee, but it was something that legal mentioned, and something the auditor has mentioned in the past about charging administrative fee to whomever it is, and you're right, we don't charge anybody, but at some point, at, at some point, if, if these deductions keep coming with, with other initiatives, we're gonna have to look at helping the auditor fund part of that cost that, that, that her staff is being asked to do, that she doesn't ordinarily do. I'm just saying that for the future. Yes, ma'am?
Let me just address counsel. We have an attorney on hand that is ready to answer any questions from, from the court, from Cox Smith, Erin Fonte. I can provide you with her number.
Let's do that after.
Also, we, we can't approve this, the, the list of MOU, there's several that conflict with law, like confidentiality, under the Open Records Act, we're required to release certain information, so we can't be in conflict with that, and we, I don't think that we can serve as an ambassador for CLC or agree to. And there's just different things here that I don't think we can agree to, so that's gonna have to be modified, subject to legal's approval as well.
Judge and Commissioners, you don't, you don't really need the MOU.
Yeah, we don't need an MOU from our point.
And Exhibit A is the consent to payroll deduction, that's all you need.
Okay.
I mean, you should only be, you know, if you go forward with this, just the approval of the actual payroll deduction is all you need.
Let's do that again, let's gonna go find, go forward, but I think that, let's go ahead and make it subject to, to, to legal, and then come up with a, with a, with a start date, and we're gonna make it effective May 1st, June 1st, and then, how are you gonna get the info all to the employees? Are you gonna put something in there, and email them, or how are you gonna do that?
We can provide with flyers, we can set up meetings, orientations.
Get with HR as well.
I think word of mouth on something like this will spread like wildfire.
Yeah. And then, and then, as, as you deal with legal, legal, come up with a, come up with a, with a start date of effective such and such, and I also work with the auditor as well, because she's gotta be intricately involved in this. Martha?
One thing that I did want to point out to the court that I, I think that is of, is of greater concern is that, is it within the role and discretion of county government to screen credit vendors for county employees? Is that a function of this governing body to do for employees?
Start again.
Is it, is it within, is it within the role and the intent of county government? Do they have the capacity, the authority to screen lending vendors for county employees? Because in essence, it appears that is what you're doing.
I don't, I don't think that there is anything, and I need to check, you know, that's part of what we're gonna be looking at from a legal review viewpoint, now that we know that we want to explore going there, in assuming, like we said earlier, we can make it happen, then we're gonna see what we can do to make it happen. I think the answer to the question is this, the statute does not say specifically that we have that authority, but the general law having to do with the administration of county government is that when it comes to hiring employees and making employee benefit packages to help and keep, retain employees, that, that is part, that does meet the test of a legitimate public purpose. So implicit in the administrative authority given by the Constitution to the Commissioner's Court is to do those things that are implied from that authority, and so, in, in my humble opinion, knowing that there's not a lot of guidance out there on this, at least for the time being, yes, we probably can do that legally, because we do have executive and administrative legislative authority here of this body to try to keep and retain employees, you make it part of your employee benefit package. Is this, I'm just curious, is this the kind of response that you receive from the other governmental entities that you're working with?
Yes, we currently had a meeting a couple of weeks ago with Eagle River County, and they're gonna be bringing it up in session as well, and they, their hesitation was payroll deduction, make sure it was legal, and what kind of benefits to the employees?
Well, that's, that's the best that I can give you today on this. I think we can do it, like I suggested earlier, it would be nice if it were clearer, it would be nice if we had an AG opinion out there that actually supported it or spoke to it specifically, and so, knowing that the court wants to go there, so long as we have a public policy, the discussion's already been made, it seems to be there, and as long as there's some control to assure that this endeavor meets that public policy purpose, then we're in, in good shape, I think. That's why I'm asking you for the contracts, whatever, you know, whatever paperwork that it takes, you know, to get this done, and get the employee the cash, and get them set up, and get it paid, and be done with, the whole transaction from beginning to end, I would like to review that.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion? Oh, Wendy?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Add a motion, a second, to approve, subject to legal review. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, Adam Carries. Thank you all. Item F, consideration of approval of a contract agreement between Cameron County and J.D. Abrams LP for the San Jose Road Project, rebid?
Judge, Commissioners, recommend to award the contract to J.D. Abrams in the amount
That's your recommendation?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
Some of...
By Commissioner Sanchez, a second by Commissioner Benavides, any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, Carries. Item G, consideration of approval of proposed change order number one for the San Jose Ranch Road Project. This one we just approved, do I only have a...
Well, yeah, that's why we award the contract, that was the procedure to follow, and we discussed it with legal, is that in order to bring the project back into budget, we worked it out with the, we discussed the, the, through value engineering, to, to see where we could save money, bring it back.
Okay, so the change order reduces it by how much?
Correct.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Some of...
By Commissioner Sanchez, second by Commissioner Benavides, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, Carries. Item H, consideration authorization for Santa Rosa CISD to use the Maria Luisa Ruiz Guerra Technology Center to host a consolidated independent school district meeting on March the 19th. Did that already happen?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Some move.
By Commissioner Sanchez, second by Commissioner Benavides, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, Adam Carries. Thank you, people. Item I, consideration authorization to appoint members of the Cameron County Animal Shelter Advisory Committee?
Judge, Commissioners, good morning. You should have this spreadsheet as part of the agenda item. The only thing that has changed is, from the spreadsheet, is we did get clarification from Glenda Stafford on the first line, and she is agreeable to participate on, on this committee. Basically, the, the top half are the possible candidates for the committee that all have agreed to do it, and the bottom half of the spreadsheet is the current members that the court has already approved, so we're seeking for the court to approve the four additional members as listed on the top.
Move to approve.
Move by Commissioner Sanchez, second by Commissioner Benavides, any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, Adam Carries.
Judge, Commissioners, can we do item J after executive session, please?
Okay. Item K, discussion impossible action regarding capital improvements projects for Cameron County Parks. Javier, I would, I would recommend that, because we have two members out, and at a minimum, Commissioner Gatz was the one that expressed concern over it, that we table this, if, unless we need to go forward today.
No, we're not, we're not in the...
Okay, that way he can be present, he's the one that wanted some more details, is that okay with you all?
But didn't he, didn't he get together, I know that he was missing this deal, and Javier met with him.
Yeah, he did, he did want us to add Lourdes to finish up one of the baseball fields that was...
Okay, so he didn't want to necessarily be here for this?
Right, he said that he was fine with the list, he just wanted us to add Lourdes to it.
Okay.
Which you've done.
Which I sent out last night.
Okay, all right. Okay, you want, move by Commissioner Benavides to approve, second by?
Second, with some discussion. Javier, what, where are we at with the additions that you made?
What I did was I added 39 and 40, which is improvements to Lourdes, finishing the third baseball field, and repair and extend the walking trail. And then what I also added was to repair the walking trail at La Paloma. That one needs repair.
Okay, what about the stuff we talked about in Santa Rosa?
That stuff, I don't have, I don't have it attached to what I sent out last night, but I do have some cost estimates. See if I got those. There was, I believe, five items. Okay. When we met with the people in Santa Rosa, the items that they had asked us to look into was a splash park, the sidewalk from the parking lot to the Boys and Girls Club or the youth center, replace the playground, which is already in the capital improvement list, to build some restrooms closer to the baseball fields. They had some repair to the concession, but we could do that under our normal, our, what do you call it, our budget. Then they wanted an alternate, if we couldn't build a splash park, is a skate park. They needed, they wanted to put some more lighting in the park, which we can get with Magic Valley. And then the fencing west of the fields, and then a basketball court, and then a walking trail.
And adding those in, what does it put us at?
If we add those in, it's an increase of $270,000, which brings it to $5,87,000.
That's without the splash park, though?
That's without the splash park.
Okay.
Commissioner, do you have a swimming pool nearby there?
I'm sorry?
Do we have a swimming pool in that area?
Yes, there's a swimming pool there.
Wouldn't that be like, you already have some sort of water activity there for the community? I'm sorry. I'm not saying that I'm against it, what I'm saying is, if you already have a swimming pool there, most parks don't have swimming pools, and I think with the monies that we had borrowed, that we got a splash pad, that was to offset the fact that we didn't have swimming pools. But, I mean, I'm just asking, because I know we had, but I didn't know whether it was Santa Maria or it was Santa Rosa.
Santa Maria and Santa Rosa both have
Oh, they do both.
Swimming pools. I know that the issue of lifeguards and opening up the pools and running them, like, how long has it been since Santa Maria Pool's been open?
Been probably 20 years.
How long?
About 20 years.
Okay. And with the splash park, we don't need lifeguards, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
And the splash parks, what I've come to learn is that, like the one in Harlingen, the city has one in Harlingen, and a lot of families use those for birthday parties and weekend gatherings, and I just see it as a more functional use, and more benefit for the community. So what I had asked Javier to do is maybe look at a splash park in Santa Rosa, and then wanted to add another one in Los Indios, they don't have a swimming pool at all. One of the other things that, in consideration of this, with the bond, capital projects with bonds, is that with the expansion of Isla Blanca Park, there's gonna be an increase in revenue, correct, Javier?
Yes, sir.
And the revenue that our park systems create are not supposed to be to make money, but just to maintain. And so, I believe that with the increase in revenue, we'd be able to maintain debt service on these additional splash parks and maintenance, correct, Javier?
Yeah, the estimate that we came up with, by increasing the number of RV sites, we'd hope to, and then also the parking, additional parking at Isla Blanca and Andy Bowie, would help increase the revenues to be able to pay for the debt on these, the $5 million, or whatever it's gonna be.
So what I was requesting was to add those projects to Santa Rosa, and maybe one more splash park for Los Indios, whatever that number would be.
The budgets that we used for the splash parks is what we used for Lourdes and La Paloma, which is $238,000. Now, the $5,87,000 does not include that splash park that you're talking about at Santa Rosa.
So we added $476,000, it would put us at... $5,563,000, if my math is correct. More or less, anyone check my math? Martha?
Martha.
I'd make a motion to approve the list with those additional that you read in with the two splash parks, no skate park.
Okay, move by, go ahead.
The $5,87,000 does include the skate park, so we take that out, so it'll reduce it by $110,000.
Okay, well then.
So it'll be $5,400,000.
$463,000.
Are you saying that the skate park was gonna cost $100,000, whatever you said?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I have a motion by Commissioner Sanchez, do I have a second?
Second.
By Commissioner Benavides, just one comment, or one question. On your, on your projection as to the amount of revenues that the additional RV spaces were going to create, have you provided that to us? I don't remember seeing it.
I presented it last, the last meeting.
And what was that? Do you remember? I don't remember. I just wanna make sure that we're all on the same page in terms of these additional revenues are gonna be able to offset any additional capital improvement costs.
Right.
And we're okay there?
Yeah, I can't remember what they were, when we were projecting them.
But Javier's gonna know.
No, actually, after y'all finished, I guess we had a question was, you're approving the list, and then the intent is what? To issue revenue bonds, to issue COs? Has Bond Council been contacted?
That's why I'm asking if somehow.
Yeah, the timeline.
Yeah, these are gonna be revenue bonds, I assume.
I don't, yeah, we don't know.
I mean, I assume they're gonna be revenue bonds, no?
I don't know if we, a lot of certificates, or they'd be revenue bonds.
The next step would be to talk to Bond Council, once we have our list.
If the projection is being made that the revenue will meet the debt obligation, then it would be the recommendation to issue revenue bonds.
Correct.
Total obligation of the parks.
Correct. Well, that's why, should we put something together? I mean, I know you presented it last week, but I just wanna make sure that, you know, something doesn't happen down the road, so, you know what, we didn't think about that, or, just wanna make sure that the revenue that's gonna be generated is gonna be enough to reduce, you know, to pay the bond debt. That's all I'm, before we do that. Pete, I thought you were gonna be McAllen. You already went, King?
Port Mansfield.
Huh?
Port Mansfield. Judge, I don't know if y'all discussed, I mean, I think we currently have an RFQ out for consultant services for a master plan.
Right.
I would much rather wait till we have a consultant on board that does the master plan, so that we can have a good feel for what the needs are, what the recommendations from the consultant is.
So the master plan is not only gonna be for the island, right? It's gonna be a master plan for all our parks?
Right, that's.
Oh, I thought it was just for the island.
That's what I thought, so.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Javier.
Which is the major.
Well, I understand that, but how does this dovetail into the improvements at Santa Rosa, Santa Maria, and all that?
Yeah, I guess those you can carve out, and look at those now, but.
The master plan is going to encompass Isla Blanca Park, basically, correct? And maybe Andy Bowie?
Andy Bowie.
Okay, so these other, these other rural parks are not gonna be in this master plan. So are you suggesting, what are you suggesting, carve them out to do what? They're already carved out, pretty much.
To do the.
A plan for each of those little parks, or what?
No, for the ones at the island.
We already have that, don't we?
Well, if we, if we.
You've got a mixture right now.
Yeah. And see, the improvements, because what I'm planning to do is
Into the mic, Javier.
Now, what I'm planning to do is add more RV sites and more parking. If the master plan, you know, suggests something different, then, you know.
Okay, so what you're talking about is the master plan to logistically see if we are gonna have more RV sites, to see if the revenue's gonna be generated, is that correct? Is that what you're saying?
Well, that, but also, like Dolphin Cove.
Yeah.
That master plan will probably have recommendations or options as to what to do with that piece of property. So all I'm saying is that, before you agree to do some of these projects, why not wait till we have a professional plan in place, and then follow that plan?
Well, I think the reason for that, and I think that the reason for that is we make a determination on how much revenue that park's gonna generate. I think it will, but.
Well, and Pete's right, because some of the biggest, or bigger ticket items that I have on this list is to move the toll booth, to build RV sites, parking, and then an office for the park rangers and the lifeguards.
So I guess what you're saying is if the master plan comes back, and says, okay, we're gonna do X amount with the Dolphin Cove and all this other stuff, I guess my concern is this, then at that point, and let's say it goes to $10 million, or whatever it would take to fix Isla Blanca, would there be enough revenue to cover everything? Or does that mean that we're just going to zero in on Isla Blanca and Andy Bowie and all those deals?
I think part of the master plan has to include a section that deals with funding options or funding analysis, on how we're able to fund the improvements that are being recommended in the plan.
That's for the consultant. That's for the consultant to also give us the answer, too.
Yeah, and hopefully, whomever the court hires, you know, can also have a section into what type of state or federal grants or funding that we can tap into for some of this type of improvements that they'll be recommending.
Well, and I had talked to Javier about that, that we could go after parks and wildlife again for more grants, because we just got one of our parks, got a $100,000 grant from them, so. But we don't wanna lose any of the projects in the western part of the county, Pete, so long as the consultant's clear on that.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
We'll have to change consultants.
No, I think you carve those out, because.
Okay.
Those won't be part of the plan, right?
No, I mean, if we're gonna wait to see what the master plan is gonna produce, to be able to see what money is gonna generate, then we would need to wait on this list.
That's correct.
Entirely, you know.
Right.
Because I don't think the revenues that we're collecting now are enough to do these improvements, or to pay for the debt. So.
But you were foreseeing that by improving the RV sites and all that, that there would be enough revenue
Correct.
To be able to cover these improvements.
Under his plan, but if the consultant comes and says, hey, wait, let's build an observation over here to watch rocket launches, and that's gonna cost us $2 million or $5 million, or whatever, then that kinda changes the scheme.
And maybe they can also include projections.
On revenue?
Yes.
Well, that's, that sounds good. All right, move to table.
Well, you wanna withdraw your motion to approve?
I'll withdraw my motion to approve.
You're second, do I hear a motion to table by Commissioner Sanchez, second by Commissioner Benavides, to table. What is the timeline for doing all this, for getting the consultant on, getting with the staff, how much time we'd like to?
The proposals are due next week, so, you know, probably mid-April, or the second week, the second meeting in April, they can come to the, to the court with a recommendation.
Are you saying, like, within three weeks, we're gonna have a recommendation from the consultant? No?
No, 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 no.
Just to hire somebody, okay, all right. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries.
Those consultants will have to get, because at the RMA, we're updating our economic study that was done for us six years ago, and that has a lot of data that can be used, you know, for projections, for types of uses. So once y'all have a consultant on board, we can share that document with them, and I'm sure it'll be very, very helpful. Thank you.
I guess, Javier, I just don't wanna lose sight of the fact that I know that the money's gonna come from the island, but that there are community parks that need certain repairs and additions made to them. Let's not forget about that.
Yeah, and that's one of the reasons that I was wanting to get, you know, this project, these, this list approved, was because there are some grants that are kinda contingent on us, like, for example, the exercise, outdoor exercise equipment that we got from UTB, it was only $5,000, so, you know, that's not gonna buy us very much. So what we were trying to do is participate in that, and make it a bigger fitness area. And so I think the estimate that we got was $20,000. So we would participate, you know, in the amount of $15,000.
So do you have any monies elsewhere that we could, we could tap into, so we wouldn't have to lose the $5,000 grant that the university gave us?
The only thing would be is if we can use lab salaries. I'm not sure what our balance is on lab salaries.
There's not much?
No, no, he hasn't had a chance to get a balance on it. That's, that's one option, is to use lab salaries. Now, to pay the consultant for this master plan is, I was gonna use, or planning on using some of that money for consultant. The.
I don't get it. You were gonna use the lab salary money?
Salaries to pay for the consultant. Where would we hire for the master plans?
So.
More or less, how much?
I mean, there's gonna be, there should be, I shouldn't say plan, there should be enough for the, to hire the consultant and some of the small improvements. But one of the things I wanna take care of right away was that grant, because there is an expiration on that.
I know. And this is a grant that the university helped get. It's exercise equipment that will be installed outside at the park to be used by park users, and it, I don't think there's any south of San Antonio, so, you know, trying to keep our citizens healthy and in fit. We applied for this grant, and we're really excited about getting it, and so that is why we wanted to, but we do have a deadline, so is there any way of taking care of this, Pete? How much?
$15,000.
$15,000.
I mean, there's not a match, it's just, we wanted to increase the size of the, of the fitness.
Can you do that?
We can look, see if.
Okay.
All right, let's move on. Anything else?
So, okay, by tabling this, are we going to be able to address the deadline on these, on this fitness equipment?
Well, I need to get the balance from Javier to see what. Well, I need to get the balance from, uh, Javier to see what, what, um, what we got...
Can we approve this, pending, Javier finding the money somewhere?
I, no, it's not, I can bring it back, I can bring it back at the next meeting, and hopefully we'll, um...
Is it gonna get passed?
Two meetings from now, we'll come back with the master plan, uh, I mean, the recommendation for consultant as well, so we'll, we'll talk to Javier and, and work out the numbers as far as our budget numbers.
Okay.
Okay, all right. All in favor, to table, sing about by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item I, I'm sorry, item J, K, item L, discussion and possible action on a second and final 90-day extension to the beachfront construction and dune protection permit issued to Larry Mark Polsky?
Uh, Judge Commissioners, um, under, um, the TAC rules, uh, we're allowed to, to, um, issue a, a, two 90-day extensions to that permit, um, it's already expired once, we've already approved one 90-day, uh, extension, this will be the second 90-day extension to that permit.
You recommend it?
Yes.
Your motion?
So moved.
By Commissioner Benavides, second by Commissioner Sanchez, all in favor, sing about by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Question and possible action regarding the reprogramming of the 2011 bond fund from the Almito Committee Center to the Committee Center in Cameron Park, because Commissioner Hernandez is not here, y'all want to table?
Move to table.
By Commissioner Sanchez, second by Commissioner Ramirez, to table, all in favor, sing about by saying aye? Any opposed, item carries. Presentations, presentation of proclamation declaring the month of March 2014 is Red Cross Month in Cameron County, Texas. Every year, we, we honor the, uh, the Red Cross for all the service that, um, that they've provided this nation, 60 years or so, 70 years? Since 19, how many? 97 years, since 1943, so when Franklin D. Roosevelt proclaimed the first Red Cross Month in support of Red Cross fundraising efforts to respond to the needs design, you know, and designated March as Red Cross Month in the U.S., the American Red Cross was created in 1881 by Clara Barton and official, officially chartered by Congress in 1900 to provide national, international relief during disasters, and we know, we have our share of disasters here. The American Red Cross South Texas Chapter, established in the Rio Grande Valley 95 years ago, and, ago in 1917, impacts and enhances tens of thousands of valley residents every single year. The Board of Directors, paid staff of six, and other 800 dedicated and trained volunteers provide disaster relief, armed force services, educational programs, health and safety, plus community pro- programming to citizens in Willacy, Cameron, Hidalgo, Starr Counties. Red Cross Month is a time to remind everyone of the work of the American Red Cross and communities across the county, and the country, and around the globe, as we defend, on, as we depend on public support to help people in need. Therefore, proclaim that the Cameron County Commissioners Court declares a month of March 2014 as Red Cross Month, signed by Sofia Benavides, Precinct 1, Ernie Hernandez, Precinct 2, David Gasa, Precinct 3, Dan Sanchez, Precinct 4, and myself. Congratulations, and thank you very much for all that you do.
Of course you do.
Of course I'll take that as, this opportunity. I would like to thank our partners, 'cause the Red Cross functions with partnership, and one of the partnerships that is becoming stronger, uh, is our partnership with the county. Uh, we've participated in sheltering exercises, uh, in this past year with your emergency management team, uh, they were a big help, and we continue to look for this, and, uh, I'd just like to recognize that, uh, the, the community itself is a, uh, good supporter of the Red Cross, and we're always, let me give you a plug, we're always looking for volunteers, and thank you very much, Judge and Commissioners.
Thank you very much. Yeah, a lot of folks don't know that, um, you're gonna fly, that hurricane preparedness really is a, is a year-round endeavor, it just doesn't happen from June to November, it's, it's all year long, and it's organizations like, like the Red Cross and others that, uh, that help us during disasters, and the last time we got hit hard was in '08 by Dolly, and y'all were there for us, and we certainly do appreciate it, thank you very much. Do I hear a motion to acknowledge?
So moved.
By Commissioner Benavides, second by Commissioner Sanchez, all in favor, sing about by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item B, presentation by Ms. Ida Cavassos Lindau with the University of Texas Pan American regarding an academic partnership opportunity for Cameron County employees.
Yes, Judge, uh, Ms. Cavassos is here to talk about the, uh, the partnership between the county and, uh, Pan Am, which you've already approved, uh, item F, earlier this, this, uh, this morning.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners, I just wanna thank Mr. Arnold Flores from HR Department and Anthony Lopez for making us part of the agenda, and I'm truly excited to, to discuss what we're doing at UTPA, uh, and really my role is reaching out into the community, into, uh, businesses, our local government, municipalities, and really forming academic partnerships, uh, between the employer and the university, and through this academic outreach, and it's really just helping you, Cameron County, retain, uh, some of your, your best employees moving forward. So, we're, I'm truly excited to discuss the two online options, fully online degrees that we are offering through UTPA, uh, to our affiliate partners. And, um, the two degrees I will discuss, it will be very brief, it's a Master's in Business Administration, a Master's in Public Administration, these two fully online Masters degrees have just proven to be extremely popular within, within the public sector, within my municipalities, and, and I just, um, want to, um, really thank you for partnering with us, because you're in great company. Um, we are partnered already with the City of Brownsville, I'm just gonna name a few, City of South Padre Island, City of San Benito, um, basically, uh, in the process of partnership with, uh, City of Herlingen, City of Mercedes, City of West Loco, City of Farr, City of Edinburgh, McAllen, all the way into Starr County, just to name a few. So, um, I'm gonna discuss that these two degrees are the exact same degrees that your employee would, would really be taking if they went to a face-to-face program, okay? It is the same professors, the same syllabi, everything, it's just that we are able to do it out of the comfort of our own home, it is, uh, intended for the working adult, the person who possibly works full-time, may have a family, or maybe too many predicaments that they're not able to go to the university. So, uh, they're designed, like I said, for the working adult, we have, um, six different start dates a year, so we're not a traditional program, if you will, like if you would go to enroll in a spring and then a summer semester, so it's every, every six weeks, uh, we, I mean, every seven weeks, excuse me, there's 36 credit hours per each degree, 12 courses in, uh, 12 courses long per degree, and they're about seven weeks in length, so this is what we call the online accelerated program. So MBA can be completed in as short as 12 months, MPA completed in 12 months, uh, taking a course at a time. A little bit about MBA program, and really who it's designed for, it's for the experienced business professional, uh, that is seeking a graduate degree, whether they, they come from a finance background, or, or, um, or even an accounting background, or, or not, you don't have to have a business background to, to take an MBA program. We're fully accredited by the Association of Advanced Collegiate Schools of Business, if you're not familiar with that, not a big deal, but what I do want you to know about that is that we are fully accredited by the exact same association as Harvard, as Stanford, Columbia University, so I want you to know that we are in great company, and, and truly excited about that. So, we have really affordable tuition, because you've decided to partner with UTPA, your member tuition, which would mean if an employee is interested in taking this online MBA, uh, you have a preferred tuition rate of $12,500, and your, um, per course would be about $1,042, so that's a difference for $14,500, a two, a $2,000 discount to your employee, um, for, for this partnership. And of course, the MPA program is, is intended for the professional in preparation for public service, which this is, of course, like I said, uh, a great partnership for that, because they, you know, this is somebody who, who, um, has a desire to serve, you know, serve in the federal, state, regional, or local levels, even nonprofit-type sectors, so it prepares them to develop that skill to have a successful career, you know, within the public sector. So, for MPA, for the member tuition is really always what I, I refer to, 'cause that's what applies to Cameron County, um, is $11,500 for, for this MPA, and you're looking at about 900, you're looking at $958 per course. So, the communication plan, how is it that we basically let the employees of Hidalgo County know of this partnership? First of all, I wanna stress, there is no cost to make these degrees available, so that is, is really great. So, we have, do you have a partnership letter?
Ma'am, we're Cameron County.
Oh, did I say Hidalgo?
Yes.
I apologize, I'm from Hidalgo, thank you so much. And by the way, I'm a Cameron County girl, this is, this is really where I'm from, I'm from San Benito originally, so, uh, my apologies, by the way, Hidalgo County is also a partner, so you're in great company there, too. So, we do have a partnership letter, I do wanna say it is not a legally bound document, it just basically, um, you know, protects, um, the partner and, and ourselves, and just really, just what our role is, we provide the announcement letter, uh, I work through HR Department, and I can provide them the announcement letter to send out to all the employees of the county. So, we create a benefits portal for you guys with your logo as well, that we can direct, uh, potential candidates, uh, to also get additional information besides the information session that I'll hold. Like I said, I hold information sessions, um, with the employees and answer any questions regarding these two degrees, questions, a lot of the questions, of course, being covered as admissions requirements and things of that nature, so those are all things that I cover as well. Thank you so much for your time, if you should have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Thank you, any questions?
I have a question, will there be any changes once it's UTRGV, or will the programs continue?
Great question, it's something that, that comes out all so often, is, um, at this point, um, as I was talking to, um, Mr. Flores, um, we haven't even yet changed the name to the actual building yet, I mean, it's something that is up and coming, I know that we've, we've selected a name, um, we, what we say, and, you know, what we, what we hope is that, that all is that we will have more opportunities available online moving forward, what really affects, will be affected most, uh, Mr. Sanchez, is that we have duplication of degrees. So, we're going to have to, in the backend, at the university, uh, reach a consensus as to what order of coursework it'll have to be taken, I don't foresee it impacting online degrees in any negative way a- at this point, so, uh, we feel comfortable saying that, and I just, I, we just hope that we will bring even more options to you guys moving forward. So, there's still a lot of, I guess, back, back-end things that need to happen, is we both have MBAs, we both have NPAs, uh, I do believe that even they might have one, uh, online as well, but, but that will be something that both deans of the schools will decide, and then, then in which order, and, and what we will do without, 'cause there's a lot of duplication, but not expecting this to be impacted in, in such a way, because it's also online, and it would never have to be at the entity as well.
Well, and my only concern was, we have employees that start a degree plan and are almost done, and then told, oh, you've gotta take these other four classes now, because it's changed, and it's more cost.
What, what I will, what I will say is that because of the partnership, and we, and we have established that, this will continue just as it should, and, and will funnel students out, and then if anything changes, then moving forward, there might be a change of coursework, or maybe word, you know, wordage of, um, maybe, you know, the name of a course, or, or, or some curricula within, within the coursework, but not, I don't foresee added courses to then change the, the actual price.
Okay.
So, thank you so much, my apologies for calling you guys, Hidalgo County, so sorry, but happy to be here, yes, sir, another question?
You didn't call us, you just mentioned Hidalgo County employees, and we care about them as well, but we're, we can only deal on ours.
By the way, I know there's been a heavy discussion of all kinds of, of things, of, uh, you know, deductions from paychecks, or payroll deductions, happy to report there will be none of that needed here, so, uh, yes, and, and I'm just, uh, excited that you see the opportunity, because if for some reason we don't have any type of tuition reimbursement in place, that it's, it's not a requirement to become a partner, but isn't it nice then to have this for our employees here, that because of the partnership, they get a discount? So, super excited to bring that, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Can I hear a motion to acknowledge the presentation?
So moved.
By Commissioner Sanchez, second by Commissioner Benavides, any further discussion? All those in favor, sing about by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item C, presentation, discussion, and possible action on audit report presented by the county auditor?
Commissioner Sanchez, that one is, you've got a copy going for you.
Thank you.
Good morning, once again.
I think we have to wait...
Okay.
Because we don't have a quorum, right?
Yes, you do, you've got two. Judge Proten, Benavides.
We're three, two are here.
Well, we can start?
For a presentation, you think we can go ahead?
I thought quorum breaks your meeting.
Yeah, but we're talking about, I know, I know, but he's not here.
So, to have a meeting, all we need's two commissioners, why'd y'all wait to start?
Yeah, I think we, I think probably the safe thing to do is wait till the judge gets back.
Just wanna make sure we do things right.
Good report, Martha, thank you.
No, we had to wait for you, there's no quorum.
Oh, I thought y'all were done.
Anyway, as I was saying...
Sorry.
Uh, our staff went out on March the 14th and the 17th and, uh, performed, uh, field audits on, uh, the constables and the JP offices, and, uh, findings and results, the audit report was emailed yesterday, uh, I trust you have had time to, to read it, and I'd like to introduce, uh, Martha Garcia, she will be, uh, presenting the audit report, and we will take questions during or after, if, if you have any.
Good morning.
Morning.
Commissioners?
Morning.
Honorable Judge Cascos, my name is Martha Garcia, and I'm here to present the audit reports performed by the auditor's office in accordance with Local Government Code Sections 115.002, Examination of Books and Reports. We perform a review for compliance to all constable offices in accordance with Local Government Codes Sections 114 dot point 043 and 44, which calls for periodic report to county auditor and to report to Commissioners Court. Government Code Section 603, Period 008, Posting of Feeds Required, as well as an inventory of firearms of all constable offices. Findings are as follows: The majority of the constable offices are not making deposits in a timely manner. We found discrepancies in the information being presented on the monthly reports due to incorrect case information and or backdating of receipts. to incorrect case information and our backdating of receipts. An approved fee list for services provided is not posted at the majority of the constable offices. As for the inventory of firearms, no significant discrepancies were noted, except that transfer forms for equipment being transferred to other departments is not being filed. We have addressed these issues with all the constable offices and recommendations have been made to all offices. A follow-up review will be conducted at a later date. We have also conducted unannounced cash counts on March fourteen and March seventeen at the Justice of the Peace offices. There was a significant finding during the cash count at the JP office precinct five one. Findings for the cash count at the precinct is as follows. The cash counted on March fourteen was thirty-four thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars, forty-five dollars and twenty-five cents. Included were February and March deposits for a total of thirteen days of undeposited funds. The cash counted on March seventeen was seventy-one thousand five hundred and eighty-two dollars and forty cents, which represented thirty-one days of undeposited funds that were kept at the office. A total of eighteen thousand two hundred and eighty-nine dollars and seventy-eight cents of funds for the month of February, presented for count on March fourteen, were not available for count on March seventeen. It is unknown where these funds were at the time of the cash count. In summary, a total of thirty-seven days worth of collections had not been deposited at the time of the cash counts. The total amount of outstanding funds as of March seventeen was eighty-nine thousand eight hundred and seventy-two dollars and twelve cents. Some of these deposits have been outstanding for over a hundred days. Deposits were, were taken to the banking segments after our March seventeen visit and as of yesterday, March twenty-sixth, the deposit for February the sixth standing. Other issues encountered at the same office was the backdating of receipts, a money order that was not properly endorsed for deposit, and several credit card transactions that had not been issued receipts from Odyssey. County officers are required by the Local Government Code Sections 113.22 and by the Code of Criminal Procedure, Article 103.004, to make daily deposits. Justice of the Peace precinct five one had been provided with recommendations to comply with these codes. Except for finding for Justice of the Peace five one, there were no significant findings for the majority of the JP offices during this limited scope audit, except for an internal control weakness that was noted in the majority of the offices. Staff continues to share tills. This issue has already been addressed in previous audits and recommendations have been made to provide clerks with separate tills and separate keys in accordance with the Office of Court Administration Court Financial Management handbook for Texas counties. The auditor's office will continue to perform reviews for compliance and issue audit reports to report any findings to you. Thank you for your consideration and this concludes my presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Martha. Well, first of all, let me, let me commend the JP's that had no discrepancies, which was Judge Flores and Judge Mendoza. Thank you for, for the job that you guys do and during this audit, you know, there's no discrepancies found in, in your offices. For the other ones, the minor about segregating of duties and the, and the cash collection boxes, that's something that should be worked out fairly, fairly simple. It's important, you know, we had a JP a couple of years ago that the reason that there was, we couldn't move forward with, with some issues because some same people were sharing a, a cash drawer. So for the JP's out there, anybody else that handles cash, it's, it's relevant and it's important that you keep separate boxes. Every, it's like a, you're like a bank. I mean, a bank, every bank teller has, has his or her own box at a bank and there's a reason for that because that just secures and then strengthens internal control. Obviously, the more serious one is, is the Harlingen JP and, and I don't, I, I read some of the responses, but is anybody here to address those responses? Because they really don't make a whole lot of sense to me. The, the one issue that, that comes up and is disturbing is the fact that deposits, if you can see, have gone undeposited for months.
Yep. Correct.
And, and there's no reason for that. I mean, I know that there's been some concerns with, with the, with the Odyssey program, but, but that shouldn't hinder someone from making a deposit. I mean, you collect the money, you deposit it. You collect the money, you deposit it. So I don't, I don't understand how, how that continues to occur. I would suggest that, that at least.
Up here, the mic.
Okay.
As far as the cash boxes?
Microphone.
As far as the cash boxes, we are with, you know, as a JPS and me, we are trying to get boxes compatible with the new software. We all did have prior boxes with our old systems, which at that time, we were in compliance, of course, with all this, you know, moving forward. It's really hard. We're getting estimates with the computer center as we speak due to the audits for everybody to have cash boxes. Five one, they just contracted with Armor Car just this past week, so they didn't have Armor Car. That's as far as I know, as far as their deposits. As far as their backdating of receipts, I can definitely attest to the fact that they haven't been trained properly to use the software in the proper manner, which we are addressing and has been corrected. I have spoken with the auditors in reference to.
Is that five dash one or five dash two?
Five one, the one that's in question of the backdating of the receipts and so forth.
So are you saying that every other JP in Cameron County and their staff have been trained properly?
No, I cannot do that fully or not to the best of my ability, no. Is there going to have to be future training? Absolutely. They know how to do the basics. Precinct five one did come in way after the fact from the normal JP offices. So they were, I mean, they, we did give them like crash courses on how to do things correctly, but to actually tell them how to, financially wise, we have several tills, we have adjustment tills, we have regular tills. Even on a daily basis, I'm in contact with our JP auditors to fix that and to see what the best practice is with the new software going forward. I mean, there hasn't been as far as like money missing and so forth. It's just so, it's just more the reporting, the payouts to the state and stuff like that as far as the financial issues go with Odyssey.
So, I'm sorry.
Well, go ahead.
Oh, go.
I wasn't.
I guess, I guess my, I guess my, I guess my question is this, other JP's are using the Odyssey programs, I understand it.
That's correct.
Okay. And, and they, none of them, none of them had issues regarding deposits being made timely, at least not, not here.
Correct.
And I, look, I mean, it's, it's, it's all a matter of risk. The longer you, the longer one maintains, you know, eighty-five thousand dollars or thirty thousand, whatever the number it finally was, the greater the risk is of it getting lost.
Of course.
There, there was some correspondence back in two thousand and five that addressed the same issue with the same JP in terms of, in terms of outstanding deposits or not being deposited. That was long before Odyssey. All I, all I can ask, I mean, I can't tell you how to do your job, but I think if money comes in, money gets deposited, you know, you figure out how to, how to reconcile it, you know, but the idea is to get that money out of your box and into the bank.
Yeah, and that's what's been told. They, the whole thing was from, as far as I know, I can't speak for that JP. I wasn't even here to speak on this issue with the audit report. I didn't know it was on the agenda. Kudos to the rest of the offices for being in compliance. They have more of a, they couldn't reconcile it. They would drop their deposits, but they didn't have Armor Car. They are now on Armor Car, so they would literally go make the deposit.
Who's they?
Precinct five one was never on Armor Car pickup. The rest of the JP's are.
Well, but.
So are you saying? Well, no, I'm not defending them in any way.
Yeah, but Armor.
Helping explain, I wasn't even here for this.
Yeah, I understand, but.
You know, with the situation.
You know, look, with all due respect, I mean, the armored car service has been available to, to all of them.
And we told them to get it last year or two years ago.
No, no, absolutely.
You know, so and I'm not, you know, I'm not going to, you know, all I'm saying is that the, these are, these are serious, not only internal control issues, but statute-related issues. And so I'm going to ask the auditor to go back periodically, at least with this one, and make sure that these deposits are being made timely. The, as I understand it, the, the longest you can go is five days. That's the longest you can go. In other words, that's, you know, obviously, it's desirable to deposit every single day, but I think the statute allows you five days. There's no such thing as a, as a three-month deposit in transit, okay? Deposits in transit clear within, at the most, maybe three days, maybe three days. So this is just not, this is not good. It's not, it's not, it's not a good sign. And I mean, you can only blame Odyssey so many times.
No, of course. And that's why I'm working with them on that issue as far as the reconciliation, if it's a factor in them using it as some type of.
Yeah, that.
Go around.
On, on the, on the using of the, of the separate boxes, I know that sometimes that's logistically difficult, okay? But, but there's a way to do it.
Yeah, and we're working on that.
You know, there's a way to do that.
Yeah, no, there's a quote out that we're getting with the computer center actually to get cash boxes compatible with the system to, I mean, because we can all get little boxes, but I mean, that defeats the whole purpose of internal control and everything. I mean, if we get these boxes that are compatible with the system the way we were before, I mean, it would be under lock and key. They would only open, you know, once a transaction is done and so forth. So we wanted to implement that and we're getting quotes for that, actually.
But did they explain to, they being the auditor, they explained to you the, the importance of having one person, one person, one box?
Uh, yeah.
One person, one box.
It's always been, and we used to have it like that. I mean, in a lot of courts with our legacy system, we had one cashier with one box and we had boxes installed for that system. But then they became moot when we moved systems, they were not compatible. The boxes and the receipt printers developed, the receipt printers that we would use were not compatible. So we had to, we initially got a quote in the beginning of Odyssey for this stuff to replace it right away, but then, I don't know, it went dead. And then now that we have a new version, it's a different compatibility issue. So now we're, since we're going to pretty much stay on this version, we're going to, you know, now get the new stuff to go with the, the software and so forth.
Let me ask, all these deposits, the eighty-nine thousand dollars that were there at some point, you know, have that, have all those been deposited?
Yes.
Okay. As of today.
There's still some.
I, I can't hear you. I'm sorry.
As of yesterday, there was still one deposit missing.
What do you, what do you, what do you mean, missing?
They haven't been deposited. Deposited today? Okay, so.
Okay, it wasn't missing, it just wasn't, had been deposited. Missing is not a good word when it comes to cash, okay?
And that deposit was from when?
February the sixth.
Okay, the one that was deposited today?
Yes.
Was from, was from February the sixth, okay? That's not good.
That's ridiculous.
Okay? That's not good.
That's unconscionable.
Well, that's, that's too big of a word for me, but.
I just wanted to cuss in public.
It just doesn't sound right, okay? Okay, so what is it that, let me ask you, what is, what is this, what is the JP doing or the staff doing to make sure that every day, these deposits are being deposited? Do you know?
No, I mean, I spoke to Pat real briefly. She was here, but she had to.
I understand.
We were here on another matter, but I did speak to her yesterday regarding the issue and she just didn't, I mean, the, I mean, everybody has different internal controls and they're going to make theirs a lot stronger as far as, you know, she's going to oversee all the deposits now, which she wasn't, you know, the traffic clerks would do it and so forth. And so she was going to do that. They have now been using Armor Car every day. As far as the lapse of deposits, I don't know any explanation to that whatsoever. That's, you know, to their, they can only answer that. But they have implemented a stronger system and she will now oversee them and now deposit them with Armor Car on a daily basis. And we'll work on reconciliation if that is the issue at a later date.
You know, and I know it's going to be somewhat cumbersome, but it may not be a bad idea. If someone, if for some reason you're not making a deposit that day, call the auditor. Let him know, we're not making a deposit today because of X. You know, no one likes surprises because they, they will, I'm going to ask them to continue going out there periodically and checking, just, just to make sure that, you know, procedures are being followed.
Yeah, I think so.
Because this is serious stuff and this is not.
They do.
Go every day till they're in a hundred percent compliance. Really, I mean.
Yeah, they do make now more than ever considerable drops to our JP offices, so.
Liz, one of the responses in here says that, says, please also be aware that the program in place is not allowing us an adequate till balance and transaction reports. We have reported this to the computer center and it really hinders our checks and balances. This is from the judge. Can you make sure that the judge is there or at least you're available to the judge to, to give the training on how to use this new software so that that's not an excuse? Because if all the other courts can do it, the only difference between them is the lack of knowledge because they didn't come on board to train sooner, correct?
Correct.
So once the cash boxes are in place and they know how to use the system, this shouldn't be an obstacle, correct?
Correct. I mean, with, with the new system, there is, you know, different type of financial, like tills and so forth, and you need to know when to use them in certain occasions as far as reversing and deleting or reposting and all this stuff. That's where I think a lot of their issues were. I think money's, and so that was, I mean, I've spoken to the auditors about that and so I am working with them. I don't know, as far as their till balance is not coming out, I can't speak for them, but it works for everybody else as far as getting the deposit for that day and, and dropping it.
Okay, and, and you're the, you're no longer in the JP court, you're like a rover?
I actually do both. And so I still have the responsibility of making my deposits in my court and doing all the things I need to do in my office and make sure it runs.
But you're available to go.
I do rove, yes. I was in Port Isabel the last two days.
Okay, so you can go over there and work with them till they get it straight?
Sure.
And who do you report to?
To, I mean, I report to the computer center and to Arnold, more to Joe than anything and Paul every day. If not, I'm at my office.
Okay.
And I'm on the phone all day.
Okay. Now, just in case there's any issue of them getting ahold of you, I can say, Judge.
Well, they all have my cellphone and they use it.
Well, but when I get the excuse, we can't get ahold of her, I can say, we'll call Joe, that's her supervisor, and he'll get her over there.
Yes, and I'm available through email twenty-four seven and my cellphone and they all have it.
I know you are, but just to have a chain of command.
As far as that aspect of it, I can't help anything else as far as why they're not depositing, but as far as the till balances and stuff, we can remedy.
We can eliminate the, we don't know how it works.
Correct.
By you helping them.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Judge, you said that, that this same problem existed in two thousand and five?
Yes.
Okay. So then there was no Odyssey back then. So they cannot use the excuse that that was the problem.
Correct.
And I think it is, that is terrible that elected officials have to be brought out in the public and told and, and they refuse. Because to me, this is refusal, okay? Because if there's an Armor Car service available to every, every department or office that takes in money, there should, why should one not be using it, you know? I mean, what if somebody breaks into the county building and this money is being held there, you know?
Or robs you on your way to the bank.
Exactly. There's absolutely no excuse.
With eighty thousand dollars in the bank.
Can you imagine?
No, the, the eighty-nine thousand dollars, those were, just explain that again. I saw the number. First it was fifty-some-odd thousand or thirty-some-odd thousand.
On the first day.
Yeah, and you were told that was it. And then you go back the next day and fifty.
On Monday, the following Monday, because it was a Friday and we counted about thirty-four thousand dollars. And then the following Monday, we went there and we counted fifty-eight. I mean.
An additional fifty-eight.
Additional fifty-eight, but.
So in a week, they collected fifty-eight thousand?
No, no, it was because it's a list of days. I mean, as you can see on the report, it's thirteen days the first time and then the second time when we came back on Monday was thirty-one days.
Wow.
For the deposits, yeah.
Well, so I, I think if I remember the statute right, that if there's any missing money, the JP becomes responsible for it or something like that?
That's correct.
That is correct? And that's, and that's just a whole lot of money to.
Personally liable, actually.
Personally liable. Martha, thank you very much for your report. It was a good report. I'd be.
I do have some more questions, though.
Yeah, yeah, no. Are there, did you get any other responses? I mean, there were some minor.
Yes, just two.
Okay, I'm no, from, from any other JP. I know we had two, two of them that, that didn't have any, any findings. On the other ones that were, that they were corrected immediately and they were nothing that I could see of, of significance. But the one that, the thing that keeps popping up is the, is the segregation of the, of the cash boxes and that one. boxes and that one appeared to be in several JPs. So, assist them to be able to segregate that as best you can.
Okay.
Okay, Commissioner, I'm sorry.
And if they're not in compliance within a month or two, please come back and let us know.
Okay.
Because if it's our fault, because we haven't given them the boxes, then we need to make sure we're doing our part. But once each has their own box and they're still doing this, then we need to take other measures. On the constables, do they have their own cash boxes?
We didn't perform cash counts on the constables.
You didn't, just reporting?
It was the compliance review.
Okay.
Do they take cash? I guess they do.
Money orders mostly.
Money orders.
Okay, but do they have these boxes and tills?
Not sure. I don't think so.
Okay, because if they don't, then we need to make sure they get them as well or we change our policy to do all the collection in the JP court if we don't want to duplicate putting that, all those cash boxes in the, because if we're going to require the JP offices to have these cash boxes, then I think anybody that's collecting money should have them, correct, Martha?
Correct.
Okay.
What is the cost of these cash boxes? Do you know? Have any idea?
We don't have any idea. The JPs can use the technology funds for this rather, to put, because it's a technological...
But just the JPs, that can't be shared, like with the constables?
Just the JPs.
Okay. And just for the record, net data was in effect in 2005.
Correct.
Okay, so there's no excuse there either. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. Do I hear a motion to acknowledge report?
So moved.
By Commissioner Benavides and by Commissioner Sanchez. Discussion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries.
Aye.
Okay, we're going to have to, well, do I hear a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
By Commissioner Benavides, same by Commissioner Sanchez, to discuss the following two items. First item pursuant to Code Section 551.071A and B and the second item pursuant to Code Section 551.0711A and B. Thank you.